Make a motion, we come out of closed session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
How's that?
Back in session, first thing is invocation by Pastor Ron Boyer from the New Malley Baptist Church. Welcome, and we appreciate you being here, and then following, I'll plead you all in place of allegiance. Rise, take off your hat.
Thank you. Our Father and our God, as we come before you tonight, and before this honorable counsel, mindful of when Moses led the people of Israel, and he says, "How can I bear you and your strife?" And thus, you gave us the structures of government, and the delegation of authority, and the ability to judge impartially. And we pray tonight, for that wisdom in this body tonight, as the people, the good people of St. Charles come to bring the issues of government before this council tonight, we pray that you will give them wisdom, you'll give them clarity of mind, and conviction of heart to govern in the best interest of the good people of St. Charles, Lord. That in the face of all the conflict we have in politics today, we pray that everything we do here tonight will be done in decency and order, with civility, and in humility, Lord. Even though we may disagree on issues, we can still walk away as friends. And we pray your presence, and we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any speak-
Just call the roll.
Oh, did we call, yeah, we called the roll before.
We did not call the roll for this meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Joe Cronin?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum?
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer?
Here.
Councilmember John White?
Here.
Now, public comment.
Our first speaker is Mike Specka.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about the recommendation against the recommendation on the Bill 4619 of not adding a stop sign to the Mason Grove Drive in St. Charles. Please put yourself in my shoes. We've lived in Mason Grove a little over a year. In that time, we witnessed a family almost get hit while trick-or-treating last Halloween night. As we were pulling into our driveway, we almost got rear-ended from a car going over the speed limit. It was suggested that, through the engineers, it suggested that we work with our homeowners' association to address the concerns and behaviors of the drivers on our street. Every year, a letter goes out to the drivers, reminding them to take down their Christmas lights, put it in their trash cans, and go 25 miles an hour. We see that every year. This neighborhood-centric message only hits the adults who manage to read the letter and does not filter down, filter down the teenage drivers in the neighborhood. The message also does not reach the drivers that filter through the neighborhood that are going above the speed limit. For example, FedEx, UPS, garbage trucks, and even school buses are flying up and down our street. It was also suggested that we increase law enforcement in the neighborhood. Since we've moved there, I've asked the police department twice on my own to increase patrols. We also have had a radar sign installed in the neighborhood for a given time, for about a week, week and a half. You know, during that time, when either the officer's there, or the street signs there, the radar guns there, people do slow down. But once that's gone, it goes right back to normal. Sorry, I lost my spot. So what we're really asking is something to help disrupt the flow of traffic. We live on a street with a lot of young kids, a lot of families with pets, and people use it as a drag strip, especially late at night. You know, we can hear these people flying up and down the street at all speeds, and really disregarding for the safety of the families that live there. It doesn't matter if we're out front, standing in the street, or talking to our neighbors, people continue to fly up and down the street. So we're just asking for some kind of help to really help control the flow of traffic here. If it's speed bumps that our neighbor, or HOA needs to have installed, or something, it's just the Wild West, and when we go to address those neighbors, they either have some excuse that, well, they're running late for this, and they're only going five miles over the speed limit. Five miles over the speed limit in a 25-mile zone is often really, really fast. So we're just asking, please, you know, please reconsider the consideration of not having that stop sign added.
The next speaker is Jill Specka.
Hello. So this is in regards to the same issue, putting a stop sign at 1325 Mason Grove. So as a mom, I worry daily, I worry on a daily basis about the well-being of my children. I can't even let them play in the front yard without worrying about that they're gonna get hit. The issue with Mason Grove is, it doesn't matter if I'm out there watching, watching them, or watching the traffic, people continue to speed in our subdivision. The presence of adults or people in the vicinity does, does nothing to curb the speeding and carelessness of the drivers that are driving down Mason Grove. Again, when you confront the people driving fast, they always make excuses, whether they were late for a meeting, or just being careful not to make sure that nobody was out in their yards. It was suggested that we ask for increased police presence in the neighborhood, which we have done on multiple occasions, but it only slows traffic for a short amount of time. We also have requested the use of radar signs to slow the traffic. Again, this worked for just a short amount of time. So please help us disrupt the flow of traffic down our street by either helping us to install a stop sign, or helping us do whatever it takes to get these people to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, I plan to have the county engineer come up and speak later on this issue, so you may want to stick around for that.
Kyle Graham.
I'm pretty sure I'm the youngest person on Mason Grove. But we just moved in, not too long ago, me and my wife, and one of the biggest issues we had was, future-wise, having kids, we do not have kids right now, was the street, before we even bought the house, was, we were concerned about how fast cars were driving, we're pretty far up in where the cars drive by, so that was an issue even before we bought the house. And we just bought the house about a month and a half ago. So even as my age, you know, we're thinking long-term, kids-wise and everything, it was an issue, and we did not, we did not like that when we bought the house. But we've met Mike and his wife and all them, and there are kids there. We do not have kids yet, but even me and my wife can see that, I mean, it's, it's an issue for young kids running around. We're right by a cul-de-sac, and with 4th of July stuff, we saw the issue. So it was an issue for us, and I think, long-term-wise, you know, when we have kids, that I would really like a stop sign there. I mean, I'm obviously very young for this group, but I see the importance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker on another issue would be Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council, Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. First thing on your agenda is the consent agenda, and it deals with library trustees. I gave my desire and my abilities and tenacity and assets, and told my desire to both the Director of Administration, Ms. Lykem, and also the County Executive, Mr. Elman. My name doesn't appear there. So is it a constant pay-to-play politics in our county? Do you have to pay a certain amount of money to be appointed to an office that doesn't pay anything, to serve my community and care about my community, to make it a better place to live and work? My assets of knowledge and ability are going to waste while I'm sitting on the sidelines, and not serving the taxpayers. However, I will be at every county council meeting, and every library board meeting. On the primary ballot for August 7th, is a surprise, I saw some signs, you probably did, that went up, in a lot of unscrupulous and illegal locations on mo dot property throughout the county, asking you vote for a tax increase of a $70 million bond issue called Proposition Ambulance. We need to send a strong message of accountability to the ambulance district, because we just, three years ago, passed a 59 cent, 59% increase in property taxes. Enough is enough. Facts, responsibility, and transparency. We already have firefighter paramedics to respond to the scene, and we're paying a quarter additional in tax in the Wentzville, Cotterville, and O'Fallon Fire Protection District. So we need to have that accountability. I ask that voters vote no on Proposition Ambulance on August 7th. In reference to the 5-4 vote last meeting to rezone the 300 acre, or 300 home development in the research park. Mr. County Executive, if you haven't already, veto this awful and impeding ordinance. Mr. Elman, have some backbone, and get some guts, and veto the bill. We, the residents, rule. After the meeting, a couple of county councilmen acted unprofessional and unethical, and I'm asking that the county police provide additional outside police protection and security, and also to make sure that everybody's rights are protected, and that nobody is hurt in decisions before the county council. I'm asking for a criminal investigation into assault and threats by Joe Cronin, County Councilman, District 1. You, we call ourselves, as a police department now, a professional agency, to serve the public. Let's see if you can conduct an impartial, fair, and open investigation, as Mr. Cronin threatened to kick my butt, explicitive, on the sidewalk.
You asked me to, but I didn't.
No, I didn't, sir. After the meeting, I stated to both Mr. Cronin and Mr. Brazel, money buys power.
Mr. Deanoff, your time's up.
I will continue at the next meeting. Thank you.
No more comments, no more cards.
Okay. We'll close public comment. Next item is the oral report for the County Exec.
Yeah, I would like to yield my time to Chief Todd. He's got some information about some things that are going on, he wants you to know about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. We received an email from Mr. Brazel the other day, and it hits home, and we're dealing with all of the time, and we're addressing it on our public sites, as well as the county site, the Miss Inger, but I think we need to get to the public also. We're getting scams constantly, and we want the citizens to know, if you receive a phone call telling you, you need to post bond, you need to pay a fine, or there's a warrant for your arrest, and you need to pay by, on the internet, by check or credit card, we don't work like that, it doesn't work like that. So we urge citizens who receive such calls to notify or contact, when in doubt, their local police department. No police department operates like that, so contact your sheriff, contact your police department, and we address these the best we can. Our best response is, when we get a phone call such as this, we got from Mr. Brazel, but the public calls us and gives us a phone number, we immediately return the phone call. They hang up on us, I don't know why, and when you call the number back, it's a dead phone. But unfortunately, there's enough citizens that pay that money that it works. So please, when in doubt, reach out to us, reach out to your elected officials, and check with directly, but we don't take credit cards over the phone or through the email. Thank you.
Dave, did they call that number today? Did you call that number today?
Yes, sir. It was, it was dead when we identified ourselves.
So they answered, and then you said who you were, and they dis-
Yes, it was precinct so-and-so, and I identified myself as who I was, they hung up. So, and they're dead phones. So as soon as they hang up, you call it back, they've already, they've already trashed the phone. And again, they're probably nowhere in this region, they just get on, but they target the elderly, who are confused, because they'll talk about a grandchild or something, and they don't necessarily know any different, and they send the money. So thank you for your email.
They called me, and they said, I have two, Mr. Brazel, you have two warrants for your arrest, you need immediate payment, call this number, and I'm thinking, I could have two warrants for my arrest, but I don't think so.
Mr. Elman's quite clear, we do not take credit cards online to pay for your warrants and fines. So thank you, but thank you for bringing that to our attention, and when in doubt, please, citizens, contact your officials, or contact us, or any police department, before you make that payment. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay. Next item's consent agenda. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries. Next is bills for final passage. Bill number 4616, would you please read?
Surely. Bill number 4616, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the Circuit Court Capital Projects Fund.
Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, or you didn't call the roll?
An ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the Circuit Court Capital Projects Fund. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
That bill passes, moving on to Bill 4617.
Bill number 4617, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 for positions within the St. Charles County Information Systems Department.
Any comments or questions? Yes.
I saw Simon here, and I thanked him personally, but I thought, I would say him publicly as well, that information letter that he sent out, from his department called the Byte, if you want to read that, it gives you a really good update that I can even understand about all the changes and all the improvements he's making, and I thought, I just wanted to call you out, Simon, because I think it helped me a lot, and if you guys haven't read it, you ought to probably read it.
Anybody else? Please, read it, call the roll.
An ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 for positions within the St. Charles County Information Systems Department. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to bills for introduction, Bill 4618.
Bill number 4618, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Michael Klinghammers, an ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of Craig Boshard subdivision.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Let's move on to Bill 4619.
Bill number 4619, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance establishing new traffic regulations, and establishing penalties for violations thereof.
Any comments?
Yes. The packet didn't have the second page of, of the memo. It only has the first page, so it doesn't really get to the, to the recommendations of staff. So-
Craig, would, would you mind coming up and?
Councilman, I have a copy here, if you'd like to look at it real quick, unless you do have it.
We can get, we're not voting on it tonight, so it's just, the summary ends in a, with the following recommendations, colon, and nothing's actually-
Yeah, it's all on the second page. If it's not there, then yes, you do not have it.
It's on the bill, not-
It's on the bill, but it's not under the summary, where one would normally look for the rest, for the recommendation.
I guess I, my question for you is, several people spoke about a stop sign, is that, not sure, Mason Grove?
Grove, yes. I've got a map here, if you'd like to, maybe if I can show this, to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at here, if that will come on. Let's see, let's, okay, this is the proper orientation. This is Cox Hill Road, and then the red lines, or the main red line coming off of Cox Hill is Mason Grove Drive itself, so you can see it's a self-contained subdivision, there's no cut-through traffic or, or anything like that, that they have to contend with. The traffic that are on the streets are pretty much the residents themselves, and visitors, delivery folks, like they said.
Can you point to that map where they were wanting a stop sign?
It's generally just up in this vicinity, right up here. As you can see, that would be a one spot, along a pretty lengthy street there, but that's generally the location of where the request was.
Yes, Joe?
We have double fine zones, is that something we can do?
I do not believe we do have double fine zones, that's never been established that I'm aware of.
Okay, a lot of the cities in our, in area, I know St. Peters does, when they have a problem like these folks are experiencing, instead of putting a stop sign up that makes everybody have to slow down, and take some longer to get to work or school, or whatever, they do those double fine zones, and I think the result is somewhere to stop sign, everybody starts thinking a little bit, wow, I get a speed ticket here, it's gonna cost me instead of the normal $100, maybe a couple of hundred or more. So I mean, is that something that there's any reason why we could not do that like those municipalities, we just have to pass an ordinance to that effect, would we?
I would, I would think so, and then it would be up to law enforcement, of course, to, to follow up on something like that.
Chief, what's your opinion of those double fine zones? Do you think they help?
Well, the double fines are fine and dandy, but like the folks are pouring out, we can't be everywhere. So we're there for, and what we do, because there's so many requests, everybody, we target particular areas, we start having complaints, we'll target particular areas, and we'll be there for a while, as they said, we see that we're gone, and now we've moved on to another subdivision. So the double fines work great, so long as we're in the area, and we can do that, but once we're gone, it's just a sign. Now, you'd have to talk to St. Peter, to Craig, or whatever, how, how well they work, I can't speak to that, and we certainly feel everybody's pain, because we get, we're getting it from all over. The traffic trailer does get their attention, but again, once the traffic trailer is gone, it's back to business as usual. It's been our experience. Most of the people we involve subdivision, and for some advantage it is, drivers, but the residents are, they're pouring out. We just want, the other night, to make contact with a particular resident for a different subdivision, expressing our concerns to them, and we'd be watching, but again, I can't speak to that sign directly, sir.
Dave, on the, the double signs, the double, double fine signs, they're like all up and down 94, who gives those double fines?
If it's St. Peter, I guess.
No, no, and unincorporated, on defiance, August, it says-
Those are on, those would be state, if they're on state routes. We do not have any unincorporated roadways, no double fines.
No, no, no double fines, they don't exist. Expecting highway patrol, yeah.
I don't, I don't know much about this double fine stuff, I don't know if I really want to go there, but the way I look at it, I mean, I don't have anybody coming up here speaking in opposition of the stop sign.
Whose district is this? Is this yours?
No.
It's John.
I don't, I don't see why, if, if, if it's a subdivision, cars are speeding through there, I don't see why you wouldn't want to put a stop sign there. I mean, I know you're trying to create just for the engineering, the flow, but is there a reason why, what's the negative impact?
Well, what, what will happen, first of all, because there's no cross-side streets, there's no intersecting streets there, it's just a straight street, so people coming down that street-
Oh, there's no, okay.
There's no intersection. So they're coming down the street, and they're gonna look and see, well, there's a stop sign for one reason and one reason only, some inconvenience means, make me stop. So after a while, they're gonna ignore it, because there's no chance for conflicting movement, there's no chance for an accident, you know, that's what stop signs are for. Stop signs are to monitor conflicting movements, and make sure that those can safely be negotiated. The other, the other issue is, they will, they will stop right at that point, but as soon as they accelerate again, they're gonna be right back to where they were, farther down the street. So you have it here, so then, next month, then do we put another one 200 feet down the road, and then another one, and another 200 feet down the road? They're really not effective for speed control, they're really not, they've never-
Well, if you're gonna break the law of speed, you're gonna break the law, run a stop sign, too, I mean-
And, and it becomes unsafe, because you're, you're anticipating that a car is gonna stop, so you may be not paying attention if you're out, you know, getting in your car or something, and he may blow right on through, he or she may blow right on, right on through.
So Craig, I have a question. If it's a speed control issue, which is what they've talked about, it's a speed control issue, is there something else we can do on a long, straightaway road like that? I mean, so I was out in Phoenix last week with my son, they put dips in there, supposed to the bumps, they put the little dips in there. They're not big dims, but if you're speeding, you'll feel it. Not that I was speeding, but I'm just saying, if you were, you could feel it. Is that something that we can do?
Well, I would say the major concern with that is that we just don't have the funding to do that. I mean, we have 700 miles of roads that we maintain, a lot of those are subdivision streets. If we, we don't even have enough money now to replace all the bad concrete slabs that we have out there. My suggestion would be, is that they, the subdivision form, because it is a self-contained unit-
Right.
Form a neighborhood improvement district, and hire an engineer to, to design some traffic calming measures that, you know, would work, and then, you know, it would be up to the subdivision themselves then, to, to pay for those improvements.
So the subdivision could put something like that in-
Certainly, could they get, get a permit from us, as, as long as, you know, we reviewed the engineering on it? It's no different than a sanitary sewer nid, or, or some of the other things that we've done over time. We just don't have the revenues for that kind of program-
Okay.
Especially as widespread as, you know, the demands probably would be at some point.
I get one.
The slowing down traffic has been something that's come up repeatedly for, you know, I've been in local government for 20 something years, and it's the, the most repeated problem, and, and I agree with you, putting stop signs where they don't really belong doesn't solve the problem, but there are other things that do. Narrowing of the road, there, you can actually put barricades, or you can design it so that it's gardens on either side, and actually narrows the road down.
Right, those are what they call traffic calming measures-
Those were-
Small roundabouts, narrowing the road. You know, the other thing that helps is, actually, parking on the street actually forces people to slow down.
That's exactly what we did in our neighborhood. I, I live on a very wide straightaway, going through a residential, back then, they built really wide streets. We, between the neighbor and I, we just park a car on each side of the street, one that we don't care about. And it, it, it works amazingly well. Cars are speeding, and then they slow down to get between the two cars.
Right, and that's, you know, that concerns me with-
They're both legally parked, and it, it works, it works very well. Go ahead.
The problem with that, children pay no attention to streets. We can put all the crosswalks, kids are kids, they'll chase their dog, they'll chase their cat, they'll chase a ball. Their only defense is that driver paying attention, and it's been most part of our experience, it's a child running out on the street behind your car, because the driver can't see them in time. That's just my only issue. If we lose the child, it doesn't make a difference, whether it's 25 or 30, that's my only concern about. The kids don't pay attention.
Right.
They're kids, and that's never gonna change for the rest of humanity. Just a thought.
Well, we could, we could probably debate this issue for quite a while. Go ahead, Joe.
Does the county have one of those rumble strip machines, like they use, like 79 and medians and stuff, you know, that-
No, we do not.
Okay. Has anybody ever tried using those strips the opposite way, instead of on edges of the road, crossways? You know what I'm talking about?
I don't, I know they, they will use them in temporary situations, during, in construction zones, and things of that nature. I don't know that I've seen them permanently done that way. These are concrete streets, so they're not quite as easy to put in as they are on asphalt, but they, you know, it can be done. That, other than that, you know, it's, speed bumps, those raise public safety concerns for me, because if, if you're in an ambulance, and you're about ready to stick somebody, or you're about to receive a stick, and the ambulance goes over a speed bump, you know, now are we compromising people's safety, plus the slowdown response times, and as far as, you know, snowplowing, just, there's a lot of different things about speed bumps that aren't very, you know, a, a good thing to use, but there's other traffic calming measures, narrowing the roadway, putting the circles in, you know, some of those things that have been done.
Similar to what Mike was saying, in Ireland, they just put two simple wood posts, when you get to a town, to narrow the road, to get everybody, and you can see the kids, two posts, they hit a post, you break a post, you put a new one in, so, I don't know.
I would, you've got something, Mike?
So, you're dying, so can you come up here real quick?
Yeah, I mean, I-
Come up here, so we can hear you. I'm watching you have a stroke there, and I feel bad for you.
Obviously, I'm here to, that's-
Right, come on up.
I've got family that are policemen, firemen, I mean, I understand, there's no way you can pay enough to get people everywhere. I've got family that are policemen and firemen, so like, they cannot be there-
I mean, I understand, there's no way you can pay enough to get people everywhere. I've got family that are policemen and firemen, so like, they cannot be there. Policemen will not help our neighborhood. There's no way.
That's why we're trying to talk about other issues to help you out.
And if, yeah, and then we're talking about how it's too expensive to have whatever the speed bumps and stuff. I mean, their, stop signs are much cheaper. I'm an accountant, so the cheapest way possible is the best way. But, I mean, a stop sign's got to be cheaper than speed bumps and things like that. I don't, I don't see how it's that expensive, and...
It's not, it's not the cost, it's the effectiveness.
It's effectiveness.
So it's, we're not talking about a cost problem with your stop sign. Your stop sign is the cheapest. What he's saying is, since you don't have a cross street, people will pay attention when you first put it in. And I appreciate where you're going with this, but you're going to lose this one, so I'm just, I'm just telling you right now. So they're going to pay attention when you start. After a while, they're going to figure out there's not a cross street, to Craig's point, and they're going to stop paying attention to it.
There's a cul-de-sac right there.
Not where you're talking about putting it.
There's a cul-de-sac right there.
It's a bubble, it's not a street, so there's three or four...
There's a cul-de-sac right there, and the exact place I grew up in, as a little kid, same exact thing, there was a cul-de-sac, and there was a stop sign.
Okay.
The exact place I grew up in.
Okay.
Which was right down the street from that. I was yay big when this neighborhood was built.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity, because you were stressing, and I wanted you to have a chance to talk.
No, yeah, no, I, I, thank you. But, yeah, the same thing. It is a cul-de-sac, and there are...
All right.
Perfect place for it.
Thank you.
Well, my feeling is, these people want a stop sign there, it's, it's a cheap solution, it's cul-de-sac there. I would support putting in the stop sign. Of course, I need, I need at least three other members of the county council to agree with me.
When you say there's a stops, a cul-de-sac, is it, is it like a half moon off the street?
Well, it depends on exactly where he's talking about. There is a cul-de-sac farther up the street, closer to Cox Hill. But as you get down to where I believe the 1325 is, is it's just a bubble in the street. There's not, there's no...
It's not an actual...
There's not an actual street. It's just a little bit wider pavement that houses farm around the arc, which further creates a problem, because where do you put the stop sign coming from the other direction? It's going to have to be 100 feet away or so, so now you've got two offset stop signs that, again, is not something that typically gets, gets done in a situation like that.
It almost creates a more of a hazard, because it's kind of a false sense of security.
That's, that's my concern.
Well, did you put the, that map back up there again?
What's John think about this?
So, so the distance from, from Cox Hill back to that bubble is a lot further than 100 feet.
Oh, yeah. It's, I don't know what it is. It's 300, 400 feet, probably.
Anybody else, any comments on this?
Well, my only comment, I'm stuck in the middle here, because the county engineer, you know, he's an expert on this, and we rely on his expertise as to whether we do it or we don't. Or we go, you know, we, it's our prerogative to go ahead and put it in if we want to put it in. He's just advising us.
Yes.
Right.
So, you know.
If I may, to get us out of this, to make a recommendation, you can spell it temporarily for six months to see how it works. I don't think it will, but it'll give them some peace of mind, and they can see for themselves that once people see that they're not going to get wrecked, and they can see, well, we can't hide and make them accountable for it, they're going to drive, like the drive-in, it's usually going to be the residents. EPS trust stuff. But my recommendation is, put it in for six months to see how it works, but I'm not afraid, so I think there's...
I like that idea. Well, thank you for your suggestion. I'd like to make a motion to put the stop sign in.
Well, this is just...
This is introduction.
Well, we could do it during introduction. We don't have to wait till the final.
You can offer an amendment.
If I have any other support on the council, I would, I would like to do that for these folks.
I like the chief's idea. You put it for six months, or what'd you say?
Temporary stop sign. I'd make a motion, we put a temporary stop sign in.
Second that.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I just mention, I believe that the chief has power to put a, order a temporary stop sign in. Chief, were you recommending that they delay the vote on the permanent? And you would order one put in, or?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm not opposed to the temporary sign, because then the folks, they'll get a little peace of mind of seeing, but they also see what we see, so we both realize we're each other not the issue. So I would recommend that we put a temporary sign in to see how it works, so we get some feedback from the citizens, we'll keep an eye on it, and we also hear from the highway department.
I think Craig's point's good, though. Where do you put it? Do you put it one at one end, and have that...
Well, the only other option would be to move it farther up to this larger cul-de-sac. Then there is actually an intersecting street, makes a little bit more sense from a, from a physical standpoint.
You could put it at 1317, as opposed to 1325. And 1317 is going to get you up closer.
That would make more sense, wouldn't it?
It would make more sense. If you put it up there.
Well, yeah, it will, but the problem's going to be is that after they hit the stop sign, they're going to be sped back up by the time they get to 1325.
Yeah, the whole thing is bound down.
It, wherever you put the stop sign, the speeding will stop. Wherever there is not a stop sign, the speeding more than likely will continue.
Well, let's let, let's let the chief and the county engineer decide where to put it, and we'll table this bill until after six months to see where it goes.
We'll just table this one section, or this part.
It's fine. I just, I, I'm guilty myself of putting in stop signs in places that they don't belong, and I drive past those on my way home every day, and I see how many people don't stop. And exactly like Craig's talking about, the kids, they know that the cars aren't going to stop there now, so it's, it's, it's creating, in my opinion, it creates a more dangerous situation than, than what's there currently. I like the idea of putting some sort of road narrowing device, whether it be as simple, as simple as parked cars, or, which I understand there's, there's issues, but some sort of constriction to the lane. Wide, open streets encourage the speeding. Stop signs is not the answer. If we, if we want to do something, we really should look at narrowing the road. And that can be done with barricades.
The stop sign will not stop the speeding.
If that's what we're doing, that's...
I understand. That's the best option. I don't, gentlemen, I don't disagree. I have a meeting, it's temporary, so the folks can see for themselves.
Well, it'd slow down the traffic in that particular area where the sign is, and that's, you know, there's a lot of people that do stop for stop signs. I stop for them, and hopefully, a lot of people will slow down and stop at the stop sign, or at least slow down and roll through it, like you see a lot of people do. So we, I've got a motion on the floor for temporary stop sign and a second.
But it's not necessary, because the chief can do it on his own.
I would suggest that we amend this bill between now and next, because there's other things in this particular bill other than just that stop sign. So I would suggest that we amend this current bill, and then bring that back for final approval in two weeks.
Well, with that in mind, I'll withdraw my second. If you want to withdraw your motion?
I do.
Okay.
No one need to... See, if you guys still want to do something, you need to make a motion to...